December 3 meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Republic Library is in session. So we start with a motion call.
Trustee Felguth.
Present.
Trustee Joshi, your microphone is muted. I'll come back to you.
Okay, there we go. Present.
Perfect, thank you. Trustee Petty.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Moro.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. So our next item is the consent agenda, which has four items, but I believe that we're only going to have one and two on there. I'm not sure we need a motion or anything, just pull the third and fourth off?
You don't need a motion, you can just pull them.
Do that, okay. So our consent agenda right now consists of the first two items, which is two sets of minutes. Do I have any comments on those, or?
I move for approval.
A second.
Yeah. Any discussion on the, at either of those sets of minutes? So this was the last meeting and the study session. Yes, Bob?
Who pulled number three and four from the consent?
Uh, I did because there are changes to be made in both of those.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Felguth.
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Petty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Chair Moro.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved. Okay, now we move to the item three, which was, was on the consent calendar, but it's a request appropriation of donated funds in the fiscal year 2021 trust fund budget. And Inga, turn it over to me.
Okay, so there's an error and there's also a revision, but the short version is that in that line that says recommendation on packet page 10, uh, right now in your packet, it says $66,614. And, um, I had actually inadvertently made a calculation error, so I'd left out $406. But since the publication of this packet, I, a donor is making a gift of $35,000, not $30,000. So, uh, the short of it is scratch out that number and write in 72,020.
Scratch, scratch, uh, scratch out what number?
So in the recommendation, it says, "The library board requests the city council appropriate $66,614."
Yeah.
Scratch that out and write in 72,020. And, this is thanks to Jim, but I see he has a little bit of perhaps consternation on his face, I don't know. Is that the right number? Good. I appreciate Jim checking my numbers.
Okay, so then that changes, that also changes the total on the page 11, right?
Yeah, so let me take you through that. On page 11, there are two charts. And it's the lower chart that had a total that's labeled 55,364. It's actually 60,770.
We're looking at it all added together in terms of the, the item on the agenda.
Yeah, and then in that chart, um, that same chart, the bottom line that's in italics, it says a total of 68,122 has been identified for the project, la, la, la. But that number is actually now 73,500. But that number is actually now 73,528.
Inga, could I add to that a little bit? Because she and I worked on these numbers a little bit
Sure.
over the last 24 hours. Uh, so I think the donor pledge number on that chart also should be the 35,000 instead of the 30 because of that increase.
Correct.
And therefore, the number below it, the total, uh, should be 60,770. And that's excluding the 12,758 from the endowment earnings that goes into the total 73,528 that Inga read previously. Just to further clarify how the numbers all add up.
So Jim, uh, Inga referred to an additional 3,500 from a donor, and you had it.
No, no, it's initial 5,000.
Oh, I thought you said 3,500.
Well, I had originally reported it as a $30,000 gift, but then the statement from Schwab that I received says 35,000.
Oh, I, I heard 3,500 more, so that was a mistake, okay.
I might, I might have misspoken, if so, I apologize.
I might have misspoken my hundreds and thousands.
Hey, and I might have misheard, so there you go.
So actually, the last statement in italics, as amended to 73,528, is now correct, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. Which will be helpful in a later item in the agenda.
Right. Okay, so since this was pulled off the consent counter, I guess we need to vote on this, yes?
I move for approval.
I'll second, and I'd also like to add a comment. Uh, I'd just like to thank the donor for the 35,000 towards the RFID. I think it'll be a very worthwhile investment, and I know it's sometimes, sometimes people, um, it's a little easier to give to other things that involve children or puppies, but it's also very important to appreciate technology. And I'm just very thankful that the donor feels that way, too. Thank you.
Right, Trustee Felguth?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Joshi?
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is approving the library holiday and closure schedule.
Yes, so a couple of things were caught there. Uh, one is for New Year's Day in 2022, it falls on a Saturday, not on a Friday. So that's the first correction. And then, um, Trustee Thompson said, "Hey, what about Sundays?" So, back before we closed, we were open seven days a week. So if we were to reopen for a full seven-day-a-week schedule, then we need to include a couple of Sundays when the library wouldn't be open, for your consideration. One is Easter Sunday, which is April 4th. And one is July 4th. That's a Sunday this year. So those are the two things to consider adding in to what had already been proposed. And then, of course, there's just the question of, you know, are these the days we want to be closed or not?
Yeah, if I could just add to that comment about the Sundays, um, we're obviously not open on Sundays now, and we may well not be open on Sundays, you know, through Easter in July. Uh, but there's a small chance that we might be open, so I thought it was cleaner just to go ahead and add them to the list of closure days. And if we happen to be closed anyway on Sunday, then there's no harm. Uh, anyway, that was my thinking. And if there's no other comment, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Oh, Bob, do you have a comment?
Yeah, well, I can comment on the motion. Um, um, my question is, uh, it, it shows us being clo- uh, open on Monday, July 5th. And I, I, does not the rest of the city take Monday, July 5th off in lieu of Sunday?
Yes, so that is, there is an asterisk next to that date, showing that it is a staff holiday. So typically in the past, what we've done is we've looked at where the holidays fall, and then we've asked ourselves, "Which of these days are days that the public would assume we are closed?" And the days that we stay open, even though it's a holiday for the city staff, is admission day? Because most people don't know about admission day, and I think school is typically in session on admission day. And then I was thinking also July 5th. Most people would say, "Oh, the holiday was on the 4th." But when the 5th rolls along, they would expect us to be open again, was my thinking. So how do we staff it on those days? Well, there's a few options. What we used to do is we would have the director, because there's no overtime issue with the director, and then on-call staff, and they would staff it. And then, uh, more recently, we've, we've looked at the option of, um, inviting, if we need them, staff to work if they want to, and then they would accrue, uh, comp time. It wouldn't be paid overtime, but they would accrue comp time.
And I was also going to ask about Monday, December 27th. Uh, is apparently a city holiday?
Yes.
So the same principle is behind my question.
Yes.
And that, Trustee, you had a question. Bob, did you get your question answered, Bob?
No.
Oh.
I mean, I'm, I'm wondering why we're not just going along with what the rest of the city does.
So we've always prioritized serving the public, and of course, there is sometimes a public perception that, uh, public, that, uh, public employees don't work very hard, and the tax dollars go towards frivolities and that sort of thing. So, uh, given how much the public relies on the library for basic life services and so forth, we've always tried to prioritize being open whenever possible. So that's, um, why we would be open on those days.
Actually, on, on the September 9th, I think you mentioned, Inga, that because our library serves Monterey High School, if they're open, there's nowhere else for teens to go, so that's one, one example of a critical day that, uh, where we still need to be able to serve those students and the public.
Exactly.
And I would simply point out, based on, and I agree with what Inga just said, about, you know, the, the breadth of the service that the library provides, and to repeat something I've said numerous times back when we were talking about the budget before it was finalized by city council. And that is that the library, along with public safety, are essential services. And if we, if we're gonna stay open seven days, because we think we serve the whole community, uh, seven days a week, that's just another, um, uh, statement in favor of an essential service similar to public safety, and therefore need to be considered in terms of future funding from that frame of reference. So that's just a, a statement based on the answers.
Well, it's certainly safe to put it on the calendar.
I mean, if we're not that essential, then we should take days off, like all the other departments of the city. But if we're so essential, we're gonna stay open seven days, with which I agree, then I think we need to make a point of being considered, along with the other quote "essential services" that are available seven days a week, namely, public safety, uh, when, um, uh, city manager and city council level decisions are being made, in particular with regard to funding.
Thank you. Harish?
Yes. Having the library closed two days in a row, like the 4th of July holiday and the Christmas holiday, allows us to do maintenance that takes more than one day. There are no other opportunities for doing that, so we should take advantage of those. And, and, and take, take the day off, do whatever that needs to be done to the facility that takes extended time, and get it done.
So I, I agree with you, Harish, that, uh, Trustee Joshi, that we need to look for opportunities to do special projects in the library, but that does involve work time, so it's, uh, somebody's being paid to come in.
That's okay. You know, that's not the ques- concern. The concern is, we don't have to keep the library open just for other reasons. If there's a pressing need, we're going to need to do these things.
Mm-hmm.
Then let's take advantage of that. It's easier to do that than on other days where it's unexpected. It's more expected, something like, uh, December 27th and then July 4th would be more expected. Impalatable.
So we have had our carpets cleaned traditionally, although it didn't happen this year, on Friday after Thanksgiving. So that's an example of the city contracting out with, um, somebody to do a service for the library. So there is that opportunity, and there's certainly, they've come in on Sundays as well, so we have Sunday, December 26th. And then depending on what our schedule is when we reopen, then, um, there are other options, too. They've come in before on a Saturday night, and then we traditionally hadn't opened until 1:00 PM on Sundays, so there was a period of time when things could be accomplished before reopening on Sunday. So I'm, I'm confident that we have enough two-day opportunities between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
And any other comments before we get Bob?
Just one other thing, it's not a holiday, because all the staff are involved, but the library closes one day a year for the staff retreat. So it's a part, it's a closure issue, which this schedule, you know, includes, even though it's not a holiday issue for staff. Um, and I assume you don't know when that might be yet, because, you know, we can't invite all the staff in at once as things stand. But, um, you know, there, there is at least that type of day when staff are involved, even though the public are excluded.
I was thinking with such a small staff, that we could have a couple of half-days, because we don't open to the public until 11:00 right now. So if our hours remain the same this spring, then we could do it that way. Or if our hours improve, then we'd come back to you with that request.
Or you could do it on a Monday, the way the current schedule goes.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other comments? Are we ready to, are we ready to vote on this?
So are we voting for it as it stands, with no changes?
Well, it, uh, to the correct, there was one correction on it, right?
And also the addition of the two Sundays. Or I guess that depends on the motion that's made.
Yeah, I understand.
I think I made the motion, and my intent was to include the correction to New Year's Day and the addition of the two Sundays on, uh, for Easter Sunday and, uh, July 4th.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, are we good? Can we, uh, we're ready to vote? Okay.
Trustee Felguth?
Yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to public comments. So the public can speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject which is not on the agenda.
And we do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10-second delay, and on Comcast Channel 25, who has an up to 90-second delay. If you do plan to make a public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, and ensure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting on Zoom, use the link or phone number on the Library Board of Trustees' agenda at iserchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, or alternatively 669-254-5252. Enter meeting ID 1605955781, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, you may raise your hand using Zoom, or if you are connected by phone, dial star 9 to raise your hand. When called upon, dial star 6 to unmute yourself. So once again, that toll-free number is 833-568-8864. The meeting ID number is 1605955781, followed by the pound sign. Chair Moro, there are no callers.
Okay, hearing none, we move on to new business. And the first item of our, uh, first and only item is to, uh, discuss and adopt strategic priorities for 2123 or 2022, you know, how we are, we decide to take that. So this is the follow-up from the, uh, study session that we had in November, in which we, um, took last year's strategic priorities and, uh, the staff and the board and, um, and Nat, uh, worked on these and, and tuned them, and, uh, we now have a draft document, and Inga added, if you notice in your packet, added her, um, status of each one of the items on there, and, uh, importance and, uh, urgency of those. So I think maybe the first thing we should talk about is whether, whether in fact these are agenda items for 2022 or 21 to 23. And, uh, I think there's a case, there could be a case made for, for either one. Uh, the fact that 2020 is over, um, would, would, would say that this starts in 2021 and goes to 2023, obviously. Um, the, the fact that, uh, these are written during a pandemic, and, uh, and, and maybe reflect that, I might argue that it should end in 2022, because we don't know when the pandemic will end, but, um, took the liberty of changing it to 2021 to 23, and, um, opening the floor for input on, on that, on that thought. Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I, I think, given that we're almost, 2020 is almost over, I'm fine with the 21 through 23. And if we happen, if the pan, if we're fortunate and the pandemic earns, ends early and the finances are better, we could always redo them early, uh, for, for the next following couple of years. But I think, uh, given what we know right now, uh, considering them for 2021 to 2023, to me, does make sense, so I'm fine with that. I also, before we get too far, Marcia, you might wanna have, uh, for any members of the public that might be watching, we may wanna, uh, have Inga highlight the two items that were not in the original packet, the initiatives that were inadvertently left off, that she added and sent, uh, to the trustees. But any members of the public might not have seen those, so at some point, I'd just like to remind that we need to highlight those two.
Yes, I just, then before we get there, I just wanted to add something about the 2123. My suspicion is that the pandemic will end a lot earlier than the budget crisis will end, and Nat may be able to attest to that, that if the pandemic were to end tomorrow, the budget crisis will not end tomorrow, and so if, there's gonna be a, a lag that we're looking at there. Okay, uh, Inga, so you wanna go ahead and update the, first, uh, let's start with that, adding the items that got left off of here.
Sure, so, so Nat, uh, edited a document for us during our study session, and I was cutting and pasting from that document into the document that you have in your packet, and somehow my copy and pasting skills were not 100%. And so I inadvertently left two initiatives off. So these were initiatives that we saw, that we discussed, but they didn't make it into the packet. So last night- So last night I sent you a revision, thank you to the trustees who said, hey, wait a minute, what happened? And um, so those are, um, in section one, which is organizational excellence, staffing operations, funding. There was a one called revenue generation, explore strategies for revenue generation. And so then the part that um, I was asked to supply is the status and my take on its urgency and its importance. So I added that the ad hoc funding committee did preliminary work regarding revenue generation. Um, staff should explore options consistent with the library's mission. So there are all kinds of ways we could make money, but what are the ways? We might generate revenue that are consistent with our mission. One of the things that we looked at that other libraries have had success with is um, offering passport service. If we were, if the pandemic were over, if people were interested in travel again, that might be something to explore. Of course, that requires staff. So that's an example. Um, and urgency, I put low at this time and importance is medium. And I guess we'll get into why, if people have questions about why I ranked things certain ways, I'm happy to provide additional information on that. The second um, one that I had inadvertently left off is, I've forgotten where it is, where, what?
Two, digital strategy, enhance customer technology experience.
Yes, thank you. In the digital um, strategy section, we had talked about, one of the things that we would love to do is make improvements that um, customers have repeatedly expressed concerns about. So explore. Oops.
Yes, thank you Nat for sharing your screen. It's up there.
And there it is in blue.
That's Francesca gets the credit for uh, sharing the screen there.
Oh, thank you Francesca. Okay, enhance customer technology experience down there at the bottom. Improve public printing for reopening. And um, under status, it would require funding and it would require assistance from our um, information services department. And they have a full plate of priorities, so we would have to get onto their list. And I put the urgency as medium and the importance as high. So those were the two things that had been inadvertently left off. Then uh, Marcia might want me to comment on some feedback that I've gotten from staff. So staff had made some suggestions to me about things that uh, in retrospect, that they saw weren't included or there were some wordsmithing suggestions that I received. So shall I share those with you?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, so uh, Mary Jane had some suggestions for uh, revision to fund development, which is under one organizational excellence. And she just spells it out more clearly um, and uh, in a way that corresponds more closely with our um, fund development plan. So I, I appreciate her recommendation. So what she suggests is that little paragraph be reworded to say, fund development, implement 2021 plan, prioritize comprehensive campaign, and then in parentheses, Monterey learns, and focus on increased contributions, attention to relation-based fundraising, major and mid-level gifts, attentive stewardship to retain donors, expanding the donor base, and partnering with the MPL Friends and Foundation. So those seem like a good way to reword what uh, that currently says. And then she also suggested down in um,
Uh, just one question, Inga. So you would replace the text that's in there now under fund development with, with the words that you just read to us?
Correct, correct. And then uh,
Before we move on?
Yeah.
Are you still going to explore grant projects such as LSTA funding for programs and include that in that block?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's, that's added, okay. So it's just the first sentence is replaced.
Yes. Okay. And then um, the other thing that she suggested some wordsmithing on is in section four, welcoming community space for all. And um, we have continue to address homelessness issues. That's the last line on the page in front of you. And she finessed that language a little bit uh, better to be clearer about what we're referring to there. So um, her suggested rewording is, working with other city departments, develop strategies to address challenges represented by the library's diverse customer base. And then in parentheses, including the unsheltered, for example. And end parentheses, optimizing services for all. So you might remember when we discussed what the homelessness issues were, there are both the training staff about comfort and, and working with diverse populations. There's working the police force in enforcing certain things. And then there's the perception that the public has uh, regarding, just when they see people that seem uh, unfamiliar to them. So there's a whole, whole series of kinds of things around this issue. And I think Mary Jane's suggested language um, improves it.
That, that is very uh, much better. It really captures, I think, uh, the issues.
Yeah. And then uh, Francesca also had some suggestions and she sent them to the board yesterday. And um, basically, under uh, under one organizational excellence, she suggested an added initiative, which would be, do you want to scroll up to the top so we see under item one? Thank you. We would add initiative, an initiative that would be called diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, or racial equity. Um, staff create and propose a D E I plan. And I think that's in keeping with uh, what the city is working on. So I think that was a, a good and timely thing to remind us about. Um, and then she suggested down under um, item three, learning and literacy. So we have a general description there, offer programming for all ages. And then it sort of describes what that programming includes. She suggested at the very end of that sentence to add the words um, and social justice. And then uh, finally, under the balanced and physical digital collections, number five, she suggested that we add um, review the collection to ensure representation of diverse authors and characters in children's books. And I think my suggestion there would be, since our collection development policy does uh, follow the library bill of rights that the American Library Association uh, created, and there is a diverse collections statement within that bill of rights. Um, I, I think what we should probably do is, this could be an activity that's included under that, under the um, plan that's mentioned under item one. Right? And then we might just look at our collection development policy language and make sure that, you know, that, that we've stated diverse collections. Uh, we've done that well in that language of our policy. Because once it's in our policy, then that's how staff um, collect materials and so forth.
But I do, I do like the idea of having something about diversity in, in the collection, in the plan, just, just so it's in the mind, even though it's maybe in the policy. I'm not sure. Or maybe something, all age groups in our diverse community or something like that. Um, it's just so that it's, it's, it's in there.
Mm hmm.
Um, her suggestion, and this suggestion, I think, was to, to say, keep the current, the collection current for all community members and not say anything about age groups.
I believe the trustee Petty has a comment. I think he's waiting.
I'm sorry, thank you. But Bob, I didn't see you then.
Okay, um, while I agree with the uh, ideas behind the um, suggestions and the information that Francesca provided, I don't think it should be part of the strategic initiatives uh, document. Uh, looking at other, just as um, Inga just did with our uh, collection development policy. Uh, if you look at other statements from the library, one of which is, quote, "The library is a progressive, dynamic organization, long tradition of innovative probing, programming, diverse range of community services." Our uh, vision statement, excellence, innovation, freedom, passion. Our mission, Monterey Library is a welcoming community, cultural and learning center for people of all ages. Encourage discovery, share the joy of reading, celebrate modest history and heritage, and protect the right to know. I think it is in those uh, contexts where the uh, we should discuss changing a few words, like instead of learning center for all ages, we could add other ways of um, uh, describing the equity concerns that we want to meet and so forth. But I think it is at that level, not the level of this document, where we ought to um, consider incorporating the uh, ideas that Francesca brought to our attention.
Um, and other, another alternative might be to, to do both. I can't, I, I mean, I know that the city has made this a priority. I know it's important to people right now. And I think that um, it's not redundant um, to add, to, to, to add these things. So that's another, that's just another way to look at it.
I would be in support of that.
Reinforce it.
It doesn't hurt to have it in two places. It really draws the attention to it.
Yes. So I'm not sure if we want to um, vote on, you know, discuss each one of these separately or try to agree on the amendment and then, and then vote on the total document.
Um, maybe we could go back to the, the, the um, ideas that we had previously discussed together and just see first if, if they seem to be um, you know, if everybody's happy with those. And then we could get, go on to the additions.
Uh, so you're talking about um, before we added Mary Jane's things or, or Francesca's suggestions?
Well, actually, I was thinking if everybody's okay with just some nuancing of the language to the existing ones, then, which was kind of Mary Jane's um, addition, then we could look at the original initiatives and see if there were any things that people wanted to talk about regarding those. And then we could go into the new initiatives that were suggested by Francesca.
Okay, I think that's, that's good. I, uh, so does anybody have any comments on the document as it stands uh, with the, with the blue additions in it, which were the orig, that, that's really the original document? Are we, are we okay with that? And, and with Mary Jane's additions uh, in the revenue generation department? I don't think we need to vote on that, but if we're okay on that, then we can move forward.
Um, Chair Moreau, I see um, Vice Chair Thompson has his hand up, but should I stop sharing this or is it still helpful for trustees?
If I have that, I just see everybody. So yes, if you can see whose hands are up, that would be fine. Okay. Uh, Jim?
Yeah, in fact, just from a process perspective, um, I, I'm actually not clear whether we're supposed to wiggle our finger or use the um, the uh, raise hand button on there. Maybe we should all have a common understanding of what the best way to do it. At U S Chair, what do you think it works the best for you?
Um, I think the finger is fine. Uh, you, you want, either one is fine. But I think it's just raising hand is more.
Okay, good. Well, um, the, I, I, I'm fine with um, the way it was sent out. There are a couple of, there's one of the items that Mary Jane suggested I didn't want to get a repeat on. But before we do that, there was one that I, I realized I wasn't that clear on uh, that we actually talked about at the um, study session. And that's the one under item number one called promotion. It's actually a subset, I guess, of fund development. Um, the fund development, I'm, I'm fairly clear on. But the separate item on the promotion, the modest PR plan, I realized I wasn't very clear on what that was all about. And I wondered if we could spend just a, a minute on what that is all about.
And Inga?
Sure. So we've, we've talked about having a, an actual plan, sort of a calendar for our promotions. We do e-blasts, we do um, social media posting. And um, we used to have a, a full-time staff person who coordinated all of our um, PR. That's been several years, many years now. And um, it was sort of farmed out to the individual librarians. Now we're down to just one librarian and myself. And so I think we need a, a plan, a modest plan of, you know, how often will we do these different promotions? And then draw in all the players that are available to us. So for instance, there's Lori Huelga and Eric Palmer from um, other parts of the city who have said, oh, we'll help you if you need help. So I think it would be nice to kind of say, okay, could you do X for us every X weeks? Or something like that, just so we have, we have it sort of more codified. And then um, I had listed the, all of the um, initials for staff members that we know can help with this sort of thing. Um, and that's what all those initials are.
So it's not, it's, so it's not so much a, a public relations plan as it is kind of a scheduling coordination plan, is that right?
Right. So it's a, it's a calendar for when we do our promotions and our um, PR pieces. Oh, there's sort of also press releases too. So yeah, just having a, a better sense of, of when we're doing all of those.
Yeah, may, maybe, I, I don't want to spend time wordsmithing necessarily, but maybe you could just add something about a calendar or something. Because I was assuming it, I was assuming it was a marketing public relations plan. And so I, I think that's a little different than what you have in mind. So I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, and you're.
Wait, but I think it is, it is um, promotion. It's just a calendar for when the public relations things go out, right? It's not a, it's not a marketing plan per se, is my understanding. But it's uh, when should, you know, when do we put out newsletters? When do we put out news blasts? When do we, you know, who, who does?
Who's on the, yeah, who does which?
On the, on Facebook, uh, you know, that, that kind of stuff, I think, right?
Right, and.
And a calendar, it's trying to figure out how to regularly promote the library and let people know what the library is doing.
Yes. And Mary Jane, you're welcome to chime in. Or Kim, either one, if you wanted to comment on this item.
Just maybe to say that last year, Inga and I started a calendar because I am somebody who sort of needs an overview. Um, and we've dusted that off and um, kind of revamped it for this calendar year that's ending and next calendar year. Haven't shown it to the staff, I don't think yet. But I've, Diane was, Diane Delormier was craving something like that so that we can take advantage of when the Friends is doing something and um, not be knocking ourselves out at that particular time, trying to pace things so that we have a cadence through the year. And it's, we gathered everything from ad, um, the ad in the Herald to a press release to the front page article about the library um, and in, including appeal letters because they are, they carry information or we seek to have them carry information and not just be solicitations. So it's kind of rudimentary, but it's a start. And it's on a piece of paper.
Well, I, I appreciate the explanation. Well, I, I appreciate the explanation. And with that, I, again, I don't want to get bogged down in too much wordsmithing. So I'm, I'm okay with the original language now. I just wanted, to me, a public relations plan is quite, is it's a different animal than what we're talking about. So I'm, I'm fine now that I'm clear with it.
Jim, maybe it would be good to say plan and calendar and just put the word calendar in there.
Or schedule.
Yeah, or schedule, plan and schedule.
Sure.
That, that would help.
And then there, there are a couple on here where, where, you know, we could debate the urgency and importance. But I'm, I'm not sure how much time we want to spend on that. But the one that, that did kind of jump out at me was on the, where is it now? The library renovation, the last one under, under item four. I agree that the urgency is low, but to me, the importance is more high than medium. And, and that one did kind of jump out at me as feeling like that's, that's really quite important. And so I, that one I would kind of argue for trying to make that one a high priority in terms of the importance, not the urgency, but the overall importance. And the last thing I had was if, if we were gonna, if we're talking about the, the revisions that Mary Jane had provided, if, if someone could read, reread the one related to the homeless issues, I didn't quite catch all of that.
Sure. So it reads as follows. Working with other city departments develops strategies to address challenges represented by the library's diverse customer bases, including the unsheltered, for example. Optimizing services for all.
Okay, I, I think that's fine. And it, it kind of touches on some of the diversity issues that Francesca was touching on as well, I think. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, in answer to your comment, Jim, I think it is important that we, that we agree on the urgency and the importance of these things. I, I think this is the document we're going to approve. This is where Inga's work plan is going to be based. This is where, where we're setting our priorities. I, I would, I would say that it is important that we agree that on these things right now.
I, i- if that's the case, then, then might I suggest that we first focus on what the initiatives are? Get that down and then we can quibble a little bit about the urgencies and the, the urgency and importance of various items?
Yes, my thoughts exactly. All right. So any, any other comments on the, on the items as stand, as amended by Mary Jane's suggestions? We good to move on from here? I can't see everybody, so.
I'm, I'm waving my finger.
Okay, Bob.
Um, are you asking now for only comments regarding Mary Jane's?
No, no, but the document, the document before we added diversity initiatives, the document, including Mary Jane's initiatives, but the document as it stands now before, before we added.
Okay, yeah, well, I, I'm with you there. But to just step, one tiny step back, the one that Jim had re, restated about the unsheltered and everything, is, is that a rewrite of something that's in front of me or is that an additional initiative?
No, it's, it's a rewrite of the one under item four, which says, continue to address homelessness issues.
Oh, okay, okay.
It broadens, it broadens the context of the homeless. It's not just issues of homelessness. It's the, it's the whole, it's, it's a broad.
As, as long as we and staff keep in mind the source of the issues that led to the creation of that initiative, then I'm fine with the rewrite. But like Jim, I had some questions with regard to the level of urgency and importance on a handful of these. But if we're not going to talk about urgency and importance right now, the one initiative that I really, 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 can I emphasize it? Really, really want to have rewritten is in section three. And the, the first bullet point that starts out, provide virtual programs. It says, provide virtual programs during closure that meet objectives for all ages and consider extending virtual programs beyond pandemic. My feeling is right now, our highest priority, given the limitations of staff and funding that we have, our highest priority right now is to develop and provide virtual programs, but that not only can be used currently, in some ways in place of in-person programs that we cannot hold because of the shutdown and everything, but with the express condition that they be activities and services and programs that we can continue. Because I think our staffing and funding, not just in the short term, and I, by that, I mean, one, two or three years, the length of this priorities planning document here, initiatives, I think we're going to be down in terms of staff and funding, maybe even indefinitely. And we also, in the, in the sense of wanting to become innovative and creative, I, I think the way that most organizations, agencies, libraries, schools are going is to develop more remote options. So I would like that sentence that I just read to be rewritten and to say, provide virtual programs during closure that meet objectives for all ages, that's the same. And extend virtual programs beyond pandemic, dropping the consider extending.
Well, in fact, Bob, maybe, maybe we take out the during closure. And we just want to provide programs that meet objectives of all ages and beyond, and, and, and extend beyond the pandemic. I mean, I, no, I don't think the during closure is really necessary, as you said.
Oh, I see. Programs that meet objectives for all ages and extend beyond the pandemic.
Yeah.
Is that what you said, Marsha?
Yeah.
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 That's fine. I mean, as long as we realize that it's to start them now. And because my, my problem with what was initially written was that it sounds like, well, and maybe we'll consider, you know, going beyond. And I think that's as important as getting them started in the short term.
Yeah. And, and great suggestion. I think so. Any, any comments on that?
I think we'll want to evaluate because I think for some of our children's programs, and I would say probably storytimes, that depending on how things go after the pandemic, it might be helpful to have in building programs for toddlers, again, for babies and toddlers, if we're able to do so. And, and one of the things I hear is that there's just this screen fatigue that kids are having to spend so much time on the screen. And so I wouldn't want to say that, that we have to continue those virtually if there's a possibility of having storytimes in person again.
Well, we're not.
Jennifer?
Yeah, the way the first portion where it talks about offering programs for all ages, wouldn't that be folded in within that particular bullet point? And then the virtual programs is over and above that.
Okay.
So it seems like that's already addressed when you're already talking about offering programs for all ages. That would, to me, in my mind, include the storytimes and it doesn't really matter. You know, it's, you're not locking it into in-person. By having the two points, you could do it either way. And to me, it kind of is an umbrella that, that covers both, both options.
Yeah. I thought I was hearing trustee petty say that the virtual programs that we offer now should be programs that we plan to continue even when the pandemic ends. Something like that.
Extend virtual programs, whether they're the same exact ones or not. But I would, I would think that for efficiency of staff time that is spent developing these things, a goal would be to create ones that could be continued and not just, you know, cast aside when we get to reopen the building. But certainly when we reopen the building, we'll have new programs that we cannot have prior to that. And there may be some that we are forced to offer virtually that we can switch back to being in person. But I think we should not just consider virtual programs beyond the pandemic, but that we should make, having virtual, more virtual programs than we have in the past, a goal for past the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying, both of you. So, good.
And I would leave the urgency and prior, and importance high as you have it there.
Okay, any, any comments on that wording? Everybody okay with that? All right. Any other, not seeing everyone's hands, and any other comments on, on it, on the plan as amended right now before we add the diversity issues?
You're not talking about urgency and importance questions, just the initiative thought?
I think the suggestion was made that we just get the plan up there and then address the urgency and important issues.
Correct.
So that, I'm, I'm kind of following that.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Okay. All right. So now shall we move on to the diversity suggestions that were made?
Shall I restate? Well, I guess everybody, the trustees have a copy of Francesca's email before them. And so what I had said is, you know, the first one is to add that staff create and propose a DEI plan underneath the organizational excellence area. And since that is a, an important issue, and I know the city is very interested, also, it seems like it's a natural right now to add it.
So you have the, just a question, you have the bandwidth to do that with, with the four people that you have? I'm, I'm
That would be a challenge, yes.
That's an interesting question.
So maybe it's a, it's a very rudimentary plan initially.
Yeah.
Marsha?
Yes.
I, I think as we go through this list and including adding potentially the suggestions from Francesca's ideas, we have importance and urgency. And even if we agree right down the line on what's high, medium, low urgency and what's high, medium, low importance, the overriding factor is going to be the probability of them. And that'll be a function of finances that will support more or less staff than we're used to having. And so something could be high urgency, high priority, importance, but just very low probability because we won't have the funding for it.
Right.
And so, you know, looking at urgency and importance is more of a idealistic way of evaluating each of these initiatives because none of them are going to be viable unless we have the finances to make them at least possible or probable.
Right. I agree. So shall we add that one to item, item one? And then the second one was, you want to continue, Inga?
Sure. So the, the second suggestion was down in our description of programs, which is in item three, adding the words, so in that main description, which starts offer programs for all ages, then at the very end, after physical health, add, and social justice. So I, I will say that the, we, we got economic, mental and physical health as community priorities from these, the assessment of the county's priorities that was conducted by United Way. So they did a big, huge process and they boiled what they heard down to economic, mental and physical health were people's top priorities. So that's where those priorities came from. But the suggestion is and to add, and social justice.
And then the last one?
Mm-hmm. Had to do with collections. So that would be in five. And it was, on the one hand, to remove age groups in the first item there, keep the collection current for all age groups. So, and replace age groups with the word, with the words, community members. And then to add, review the collection to ensure representation of diverse authors and characters in children's books.
I'm not sure. So review the collection is an activity that requires going through the collection and checking off things? Or maybe, maybe the best thing is to just say, ensure representation, which would require people to keep it in mind when building the collection and?
That's why I think it belongs in our collection development policy because our question means for how we select materials. And so we do have, I was looking at our collection development policy, we use the word diversity six times in it. We talk about diverse voices of authors. We don't talk about diverse characters in children's books. So that's why I was thinking if we were working as a staff on a plan, a DEI plan, then we might say, well, let's, as part of the plan, one item on the plan would be review the collection development policy to see that we're using, you know, these kinds of criteria. As opposed to making it a, a bullet here.
So you're saying, instead of saying, review the collection, say, review the collection development policy?
Well, that, that would be an activity that would be subsumed under the, the plan that we're asking staff to develop under item one.
Yeah.
A task would be
Be a separate item.
Right. So, so one task might be review our recruitment language, you know, through the lens of DEI. Another would be review our collection development policy through that lens.
Could we say something like, continue developing a collection that reflects, and then we talk about the different items in that list, the diversity and equity and all that?
That's a possible one.
Because it is, you know, it is covered to some extent, as Inga pointed out, in the collection development policy that we already have. And so I think we could say, continue developing a collection that reflects, and then we talk about those things like equity and diversity and so forth that have come out of Francesca's suggestions?
Yeah, that's a compromise, I think. That sounds good.
I do think that, yeah. That will lead to us looking at our collection development policy because that's really our source for making decisions.
So, but, and this, and this sort of reinforces that without forcing you to create another activity.
Correct.
It is a sort of continuing to do what you're already doing. I, I might suggest where it says, keep the collecting current for all community members, I, I might say, and age groups. Somehow, community members, in my mind, I forget about two-year-olds. I think about grownups. And so I like the idea of saying all community members, but I might say, community members and age groups. And then, yes, you could say that overlaps, but in my mind, it puts the kids back in.
Right. And I know that in the past, we've had us librarians who've been really Right, and I know that in the past, we've had us librarians who've been really vocal about, you know, looking at it from kids' perspective. As opposed to uh some librarians think, you know, oh, if we say families or parents, that's adequate. But I think also, you know, there's a a kids' bill of rights as part of the ALA bill of rights, and you know, we do need to yeah, make sure that from kids too, we're providing.
Yeah, because. See me, she says, um, so excuse me for butting in if I am, but since you can't see me, to wave my finger at you, Marsha.
You're not butting in, Bob. It's it's your turn.
Um, and uh keeping it current for uh all members of the community and ages or age groups. Um, I think also means keeping it current for adults because we know that with the um lack of city funding for purchasing new materials, adult materials are falling behind in keeping current. And so um, you know, I I I think all age groups is the way to say it and not focus on either the young or the older. But just to make sure that we're looking at the uh entire spectrum of uh ages of our patrons.
Yeah.
As long as we're, as long as we're modifying the wording on this, instead of saying other funding sources, maybe we could say traditional. Because traditionally, it's been the city that's funded our collection.
Just funding sources, no other, no traditional, just drop the adjective there. Supplement funding sources as necessary.
Okay. And then Bob, can you say again? Uh, what you were suggesting about the language to include the um suggestion that Francesca had?
For this particular initiative?
Is that where we?
I said, continue developing the collection to reflect. And then finish off that sentence with the uh some of the wording that Francesca supplied.
Okay, to reflect our uh diverse authors and characters.
Diversity and equity, et cetera, et cetera, whatever.
Hopefully, hopefully, yeah, Francesca can get all this down and and.
Actually, I'm getting it down, or she's getting it down in minutes, but I've got a copy of this document, I just.
Oh, great, yeah. Okay, are we um, are we okay with that and ready to move on to the uh urgency and importance? Of these? And see if there are any changes. Is everybody okay with that? The other comments? Looking, I'm looking to see if there's any other hands. Okay. Um, so we start with I with with one, does anybody have any changes in the organizational excellence um category? Yeah, priority. Um, I have one thought, and that's the cross-training one. Uh, the the, uh, I think the importance of that is high. I mean, at the risk of saying everything's important.
Yeah.
I think it is important uh uh to do it. I I I know that it's impossible to do when you have four people working here, so you can't do it now. But it it is really important to have that cross-training so that we can, particularly as you start building back staff, to 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 have that versatility, I think.
I would agree with you.
I was um trying to find things that wouldn't be high because at the original time, I went through this, everything.
Yeah.
Came back, or most things came back as high.
Yeah.
I had that note in my notes too. I think uh it is of high importance that the uh cross-training be um increased and developed, again, because of what I said before about the probability of not having the uh funding and staff like we're used to. So I think that's important, that when as we develop increased funding and staffing, that uh cross-training or people who can do sort of multi-things be uh you know, uh, prime consideration.
Yeah.
Well, it is traditionally something that we've done, it's just there are few key positions that um we haven't covered as much as we could. David's position being a good example, where he knows so much about, you know, coding and things that other people, you know, haven't been cross-trained and don't have the knowledge base in. There's some exceptions like that.
Well, I I think it's true that staffing, the staff, um, the the staff um priority has always been up there. So so maybe the fact that there's they're all high in importance is not so terrible, but I I do think that it probably should be.
Okay.
Any other comments on anything in, yes, Harish?
Yes, I I think it's perfectly okay for everything that's on this document to be high priority. We have, if we have limited resources, we can just remove things from this document and say, this is all we can do. Focus only on the high priority things and and remove anything that's now. Not just keep it there because it's a good idea, but say this is what we're focusing on for the next two years. That's all that remains.
And in particular, it's kind of the urgency that tells you when you have to do it.
Correct.
Not saying it's urgent because you can't do it now because you got nobody, you you aren't enough people to cross-train, so.
And just put it off for twenty nineteen, twenty-four, uh twenty twenty-four, sorry.
Okay, so are we okay with with the first priority? Can we move on to the second one about urgency and importance? And I'm I'm just assuming that the status is correct because Inga knows where the status of all these are, so.
But we're changing that cross-training importance to high, is that correct?
Right.
Jim? Jim?
Uh, I don't think we've established an urgency or an importance on the uh DEI plan, or if we did, I missed it.
Okay, so Francesca had suggested that it be a medium urgency and high priority. And I did follow up with another email saying that actually I would suggest high, but um that's me, of course.
Well, I think it's, you mean, high urgency, you're saying? Yeah, well, again, it's one of those things is is, do you have enough people to to?
Yeah, I think a part of it is, is it something that when it's high urgency and high priority, I think it's like we're we better start working on it right now and and so I I would give it a medium, just because we can't work on everything right now.
I would agree with this, the the high urgency, high importance, you know, is all based off of the Stephen Covey model, and we started using this last year in twenty nineteen with uh city council in trying to determine what truly is uh something that needs to be dealt with today versus is still important, don't get us wrong, but isn't something that we need to tackle in the next few months.
So so maybe we can look at it that way, that that the ones that are really high have to be done immediately in order to keep functioning, and the ones that are um medium are still very important, but you know, the house is not on fire for those, it's just smoldering.
You're talking about the urgency issue, right, Marsha?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so something could easily be high importance but medium urgency. Because, you know, we don't necessarily have to do it this week, but when we can, it's really important.
Yes.
Like the cross-training.
Yes, yes, that's what I think.
And then I've put uh revenue generation, I had said low urgency. Just because I was thinking there are not that many ways we can generate revenue while we're closed. You know, we talked about, oh, we could improve the library store, but unless we get that merchandise online, we wouldn't be able to generate more revenue that way, so that's why it's low, partly because of the closure.
If I could just pick up on that one, that was one I was going to suggest for the urgency, perhaps we might want to think about moving it to medium. Even though, even though we, some of them you clearly couldn't implement um until we had a reopening. Some of them will take a little bit of planning and, you know, the implementation sometimes, you know, is a small part of figuring out what to do. And in this case, it may take a while to figure out what to do with some of those items, because even the funding committee itself didn't have a consensus on some of those issues. So I think there's some that will not, you know, take a little bit of discussion. So to me, um, making that medium urgency makes sense, I wouldn't make it high. Uh, but medium, I think, might be appropriate. At least I'd throw that out. I don't feel real strongly about it. But that would be my suggestion.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So you're saying medium urgency and?
Medium urgency and importance.
And medium importance.
But if others don't agree, I is, I'm not going to fall on my sword on that one.
And and originally, when I was talking about revenue generation, and this came from back when um the city was first looking at um the financial crisis and so forth, I had included fundraising as part of revenue generation. And then I would say high.
Yeah.
High, but now that we've separated fundraising out of other ways of generating revenue, then I saw it as lower, but I'm fine with medium, medium.
Yeah. Okay, so that's um, that's item one, that's priority one. Shall we move on to item two, the digital strategy? And and see if there are any uh any changes to be made in the urgency and the importance of anything there? Uh, Jim?
I I have one suggestion, or at least for discussion, the Explore California History Room Digitalization Project. While I certainly support that, I'm thinking maybe that could be a medium priority. But I'm, again, I can be talked out of that easily. I'm trying to make a mixture of raising some some priorities and lowering some.
So you're talking about in importance or?
In in importance, yeah, changing it from high to medium.
Uh, Inga, you want to respond to that? What do you, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, but the thing is, is that um, that was something the council brought up, if you'll recall, when we had a study session with them. They had said, gosh, you know, if you available, that's really important, not only for preservation of them, but for um now, you know, of course, I guess they hadn't been thinking about the pandemic, but now we get that question over and over again, you know, can I access your archives? Can I look at your digital images? And no, so so I think that for too long, we've not made it a high um on our importance list and and the the um thing is, is that we've we've digitized thousands of images. We do have really high-quality digitized digitized version of our images. It's just that we haven't moved forward with a project to get them available to the public.
And that that seems like it would be a great uh grant that uh somebody, somebody could write.
Yes.
Bring in funding to do that.
Well, I I'm willing to, Inga makes a convincing case, I'm willing to stay with high unless others wanted to lower it to medium. Hearing that, why don't we leave it at high?
Any other suggestions on uh on priority two before we move on to three?
I have a question, why is uh uh the enhancing customer technology experience, improving public printing for reopening? What do you mean by improving public printing?
So if a member of the public wants to print something, um, say they they bring in a resume on a flash drive and they're like, hey, I need to print my resume. They have to go through a whole series of steps and hoops in order to print. And if they're sitting at a public computer and they're like, I'm working on a report, I need a printed uh color image of something they see on the screen, they have to save it uh onto a flash drive, then go over to the printers. Then, you know, load up the flash drive, it's just so many cumbersome steps that we lose people that way. It's it's not an easy thing to do and and as you may know, a lot of people, that's one of the things they come to the library for. Because they say, I don't have a printer, you know, I've scaled back, I don't have a printer, can I print here? And it's just.
And when they use our printer equipment and use our paper supplies, they pay a fee for that?
They do, and that goes directly into the trust fund, so it's a revenue generator, actually.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the wording. No, I I uh, I mean, yeah, so I agree with the way it is there then. I just wanted to understand what the wording meant.
Sure.
I have a question, are you using a pay-for-print program like the colleges use? Uh, so that you're able to capture that and um, you know, you can handle all of it via software rather than?
We do, we have a software program, but it's, you know, it's one that we acquired a long time ago, and we have done a recent RFP or process to upgrade to something.
Okay.
That's funky.
Okay, so that that's worth doing since it helps the public and it'll generate revenue.
Yeah.
And it'll help staff because they won't be spending all their time being tech support reps for the public.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, uh, so we move on to uh item three, which we've made a bunch of changes in.
I don't hear anybody else, so I'm going to speak up.
Sure.
Because you still can't see me, right, Marsha?
No, no, I see you, I see you.
Oh, you can now, oh, okay.
My god.
Now wave my finger and wait till you recognize me.
Uh, Bob, is that you?
Yes, yes. Uh, with regard to the section that includes relaunch Bookmobile and explore electric vehicles. I think all four boxes, urgency and importance, should be high. I think that's going to be a, uh, as I said, an important thing as we reconnect with the community and extend our services. And especially looking into uh smaller vehicles that can go more places, be driven by more people without having to have a special driver's license, uh, lower maintenance costs, lower replacement costs. Um, I I think urgency, um, not the probability that we can do it soon, but once we can, I think both urgency and importance for the uh long-term reasons. Uh, I would make all four of those boxes high for those.
So, so possibly, uh, I am stand-up about exploring the electric vehicle, but relaunching the Bookmobile, which says on the status on pause, you know, we just can't do it, may maybe that one, uh, you, there's nothing you can do about that. I mean, you can, you you can immediately start looking at electric vehicles, but you can't do anything with the Bookmobile until.
In fact, now that you mentioned that, uh, I mean, number one, I wouldn't limit it to electric, I would say smaller vehicles or small vehicles. Um, but uh because, uh, you know, uh, be, small vehicles that are much, much, much more fuel-efficient than a gigantic Bookmobile would be an improvement. And if it's an electric one that is more energy efficient, great, but even um uh gas-powered ones that are smaller would be uh uh more efficient and and create uh financial savings compared to the large Bookmobile. So I guess what I would say is, if we can go that route, then the importance of uh relaunching the gigantic Bookmobile would not be higher.
So beg to differ, so the of course, this changed, I think, last week, but we were told by the senior um housing that we visit that they would welcome us back, um, because their residents um really miss having book delivery. And and the Bookmobile is also a um, what's it called, a billboard, a rolling billboard, you know, that advertises the library and keeps the library in people's minds. So I think relaunching the Bookmobile as health restrictions and funding permits is um you know, a medium to high. is, you know, a medium to high, of medium to high importance. And then I think the electric vehicle issue needs probably more discussion because the city has told me we can't have two vehicles. But an electric vehicle is seen not as a fully functional vehicle. And so there was more like a way to bring the library to events like, or to go places that we haven't been able to go before. If we get just a smaller fuel-efficient vehicle, then the big Bookmobile will probably go away. And then we'll have to reconfigure our service to a smaller vehicle.
Because we probably can't solve this today.
Yeah.
Perhaps we should, we should.
We make both medium in terms of urgency.
Yeah, we could do that. We could make them both medium in terms of urgency and.
But I think they're both high in importance.
Well, yeah, but the Bookmobile, we can't do anything now. And if we use that definition that Jim mentioned, which is when it's high, that means you want to like drop everything and start working on it right now.
High urgency.
No, of importance, I mean.
Well, I think something could be important but not urgent.
Yeah, or, yeah, okay, but so to be, we don't want it to be urgent because we can't do anything about it right now.
But the importance, whenever we can, it should be high, I think.
I would say high for relaunching the Bookmobile service.
Okay, so we can, so you're saying high for importance for?
Yeah. And then leave the electric vehicle at medium.
And change both urgencies to medium?
Yes.
Jim?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Anything else on item three? Okay, item four, priority four, welcoming community space. So Inga, I just had a question about the reconfiguring the help desk. I think you had mentioned that when you reopen, you want to have it reconfigured. And it's important to do that for staff efficiency. So maybe that one should be higher in urgencies.
Yes. And high in importance.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, right, that you really want to start doing. I think that's what we heard from you. So we can change that for those to high.
Okay.
I mean, if you feel that when the doors open, it ought to be done, I think that's, you got to put it up there.
Yes.
And Jim, we already changed the library renovation one, right, Jim?
I mentioned it, but I don't think it was, there was a consensus on it. Yeah, I'm fine with the low urgency, although, you know, we still want to make sure we keep in the mix there as the citywide planning goes on. But in terms of importance, I'd like to suggest changing it from medium to high.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we all okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. And now the last one. Balanced physical and digital collections. Any changes on those? At least we're giving you a few mediums. Everything is high priority.
Well, that sort of begs Harisha's question that if it's not high, why is it on the list of importance?
Well.
I mean, it says this is our list of priorities, right? So in order for something to be a priority, shouldn't it be high in importance?
Well, these are initiatives under the priorities. So these are things to do, projects to do, under the priorities. And so.
I understand where Trustee Petty is coming from on this. I struggle with it all the time when we try to say, well, what's the point of having on the list if they're all high priorities? For us, the exercise is to recognize that all of these are high priorities, but it's all relative in comparison. And by having some that are high, some that are medium, and some that are low, we're truly providing a little bit of context to which one of the other of these are more priority. The other alternative, which I know we don't have the time to do, is to go through a process where we actually force rank all of these. And we rank from one to 15, what are the priorities? So we felt like this urgency-importance model gives a little bit of flexibility so that we can achieve a little bit of both.
Right, and I think you can't rank them all as one. It just doesn't make sense because it's not possible to do them all. So this gives you a little flexibility. Jim?
Yeah, I might note that we don't have any low in importance, unless I've missed it. I think they're all medium or high. We do have some low in urgency, but we don't have any low in importance. Maybe we should, but, I mean, that kind of speaks to Bob's point. We don't have any low-important things on our priority list, so I'm fine with it as is.
Well, they're all somewhat important, I guess that's what that's.
Yeah. And while I have the floor, Marcia, also, before we take action on this, I just wanted to make sure we provide the public an opportunity to comment as well as staff in that.
Right, so if we, if there are no more comments on this, then we'll move to asking staff, asking that, and asking the public to comment before we vote to adopt it as amended. So are we all, are we all, the board members, all good with this so far? Okay, how about the staff and that, the folks who are here with us? Anybody have any speak now or hold your piece?
I just wanted to acknowledge how the great work that you all have done putting this together. Just as an observer, I feel like it's, there's never a perfect science to putting together these priorities with urgency and importance and what have you. It's always challenging. I feel for what Trustee Petty was saying because I struggle with it as well, like I said earlier. But I think it's a really solid document that helps provide a roadmap to where the library will go in the next few years.
And guidance, and guidance to Inga when she does her work plan as well. So it'll be, I'm sure it'll be very helpful to you, Inga. Okay, so I think now we are ready for public comment?
But maybe, I'd suggest asking staff if they have any additional input.
Yes, I thought I did, but yes, anyway. Anybody else have any input? Staff members? We good? Everybody happy with it as is? Okay.
Did you, I didn't see you nod your head. Are you good?
I am, yes. I'll second the thank you for your work and also considering the additions as well.
They were very good additions from both of you folks. Thank you.
Yes, so.
All right, are we ready for public comments?
Yes, okay, so for any members of the public, you are invited to share your comments. We do encourage you to join the meeting live via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. To make a public comment, please raise your hand using Zoom. To join by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864 or 669-254-5252. Please enter meeting ID 1605955781, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, please dial star six to unmute yourself. So we'll wait just a moment. However, at this time, there is nobody that has called in or is waiting to speak.
Okay, so I think, do we have a motion to approve this document as amended?
I will say no.
Second it.
Any comments on the motion before we vote? Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote. Wait, comment, Jim?
Just because you may move on so quickly, once we have the vote, I just wanted to ask Inga to send out a revised version of this after the meeting, once you have a chance to do so. I think it'll be a very helpful document for all of us, and I'd love to get it within a week or two.
Sure. We should be able to send it out after the meeting.
That would be great. Okay.
Okay, Trustee Felgoth.
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moreau?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hooray, we have a plan. Okay, moving forward. Any other comments before we move forward? We're good? Now we move on to old business, authorizing library staff to proceed with contract for RFID service within identified funding parameters. So, Inga?
Okay. Let's see, so the main thing that I wanted to share was that the corrections that we discussed in item three apply to this report in that the amount that is available now for RFID is the amended figure And we, since we last met, I have received three informal. So I found out that we don't need to do an RFP. We can actually do a piggybacking process, which I'm very excited about, which is we can have, somebody else has worked out a great cost for the service. And then as long as they followed the guidelines that we follow with our purchasing, our city purchasing, we're able to piggyback on that, on that contract and get those same great prices. So anyway, we have that process. And so then I was able to get three informal bids, and I'm still evaluating them because they keep not quite matching up in terms of, you know, how many of this and how many of that from one vendor to the next. But the range of, the range now of informal quotes that I have is from 30,000 to 57. And.
Question, does that include everything, I mean, the tags and the automatic materials handling also?
Right, no, not the AMH. So I'm asking them for AMH figures, but that would be like a phase two. And that's Automated Material Handling System. And I did confirm with our finance department that consider that a separate project because it is a standalone. And so it's not in violation of the purchasing ordinance where, you know, you can't just take one invoice and say, whoops, that's too much. I'm going to pay half of it and then pay the other half another time. So you can really see these as two different phases. And I've also, yes?
A question about that. Once we make a commitment to go with one vendor, does the AMH then lock us into that vendor?
No, so that's the nice thing because there are international standards for RFID. You can actually, all of it can be purchased. So you could, you could purchase a different, yeah, piecemeal, thank you. You can get the gates from one vendor, the self-checks from another vendor. And then yet another vendor use the Automated Material Handling System. Yeah.
That way of that vendor that we purchase from goes out of business or something, we're not then stuck. So that's.
Right, exactly.
And so if you go ahead with the, if we go ahead with the RFID, that's the piece that requires the tagging. And that's the piece that we require library staff and maybe closure. So we do that now. And the Automated Materials Handling is something that can be installed in a couple hours, I assume. Or is that, that doesn't really interfere if the library is already open or?
It would, it would take some installation time to set it up. But we could do returns in a different location while it's being installed.
And I would imagine it wouldn't take too long.
Right, and right now, you know, we're not using that return area at all. So if we were, we were to receive additional funding while we were still closed, then that would be an ideal time to install Automated Materials Handler as well.
A question. Do we want to prepare for the layout of the library where people do the return from the outside, whether they come in? And then, because right now, the place where you drop the material off is inside the library where they come in quite a bit. So we have the outside drop-off. Is this a good time to then reconfigure the office space and the drop-off so that when we do install this AMH, it's ready to go, it's pre-planned?
So it is a good idea to have a drop-off on the outside of the building. But to install, that would require some major work on the exterior of the building at this time. So that would be too cost prohibitive. However, the AMH is again modular. So we could buy one, use it in the current location. And then, once we get to a remodel, we could move that same equipment and reconfigure it in a new location.
Okay, what I was suggesting was that we move the locations where we have office spaces now, which is what we have where we do the sorting and things. So that at the time that you install the AMH, all the moving has already been done.
Yeah, the challenge is just that we would want an exterior return slot, and that would be cost prohibitive. So at this point, until we can do that level of remodeling, it needs to be in a location like the location that it currently is in.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Jim?
Oh, you're muted.
You're muted. You're muted.
My apologies. I was trying to ask whether you have any more clarity at this point, Inga, about how the Pacific Grove relationship would work in the RFID world?
So they are waiting for the dust to clear with their renovation project to see if there are some fundings left over from that project. And if they might be able to spend it on something like this. So no, I don't have further clarity. They're very interested in our project, and we've talked about some different options, but we haven't landed on one. But they have talked about, as they purchase new materials, they can purchase them with the RFID tag already in them. So they're definitely interested.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I did.
Yes, Bob?
Well, I have a question about the item on the agenda. It says, just a second, I lost it. I'll be right back with you.
Authorize the staff to?
Yeah, authorize the staff. Well, we've already authorized the staff to check into it. And until we get, you know, the actual bids, we can't authorize the staff to select a vendor and begin, you know, the purchase. So I'm not sure what we're doing other than getting an update from Inga tonight.
So I'm actually asking you to give me the go-ahead to make the purchase, knowing that we have the funds that I specified and knowing that we have three bids that I'm evaluating.
So my understanding, if I'm wrong, is that at this point, the city kind of takes over in the process. We don't read the bids and decide who's going to get the bid. We don't read the bids and decide who's going to get the bid. This, this is not our function. Our function is to say, go ahead with the process and work with the city to make this happen. Is that correct?
Right.
So it passes from us, we authorize you to spend the money to do this and it passes from us to the city. So that's what we're doing.
If that's the case, then I move that we authorize the staff to do that.
I, I think we need public comment, I think, before we do that, right? Francesca?
They can comment on the motion, but go ahead.
Well, I thought before we make the motion, we should listen to hear what, what anybody has to say.
Just before the vote happens is the most important part. So however you'd like, I don't know if all trustees have had questions, if you have more discussion?
Well, yeah, if nobody has any questions, let's just hear if there's any public comment and then we'll go ahead with the motion to move forward, okay?
Okay, sure. So for viewers watching, we of course do encourage you to participate live on Zoom Gov. You may raise your Zoom hand. Or if you'd like to join by telephone, please dial toll-free eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. Enter meeting ID number one-six-zero-five-nine-five-five-seven-eight-one, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, please press pound. Again, these numbers should be on the chyron on your screen. The toll-free number is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. Meeting ID number one-six-zero-five-nine-five-five-seven-eight-one, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, please press the pound sign. Chair Moreau, there are no callers. I'll keep my eye out in the chance somebody does.
Thank you.
Yes.
So now I want to call on Bob again because you were, you were about to make a motion.
I, I move that the board authorize the library staff to proceed with the RFID contract.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And trustee Felgoth?
Yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moreau?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you move forward. All right. Now we have some informational, oh no, I'm sorry, we have an update on library staffing. And that is from Inga.
All right, so there had been a question, just sort of like to bring you up to date. As I was bringing in different, or we're bringing in different part-time folks, you know, sort of like a org chart, so that there was a clearer sense of who do we have on board now? And what are they doing? And how are their hours being funded? So that's what this report is about. And I have a couple of corrections. To a close reader, who is great with numbers. Okay, so on packet page twenty-two, in the paragraph that has the bold first two words that says trust fund. So that was my description of positions that are being paid for, or hours that are being paid through the trust fund. So the third line down, I say ten hours per week. And that should be thirteen hours per week. So I confused in my mind, we had a set amount of money to start with, roughly thirty thousand dollars. And that covered some of a interim fund development position. And then we asked the Friends for another lump to give us some more hours. So we, so this covers thirteen hours and we asked the Friends for funds to cover an additional ten. So that's, that's where the error was there. And then the second thing was in the final paragraph regarding volunteers. So anytime I look out the window, I see volunteers scurrying around, doing wonderful work for us. It seems like we have seven and a half, equivalent of seven and a half full-time, but it's actually only two. So I did the math wrong, so three-hundred-and-three hours per month. I divided that by forty and I was like, oh wow, seven-point-five. So no, it's actually only two full-time equivalent staff members for three-hundred-and-three hours. But were there questions? I have a chart for you that shows in the general fund which employees we have and what that totals up to, which part-time hours we had and what that totals up to. Okay.
Well, two, two full-time people for volunteers is pretty wonderful.
Yeah.
Even in itself, so. Two is pretty great, too. Jim?
I just wanted to follow up on that issue about the fund development, interim fund development coordinator with the additional, the supplemental hours from the Friends and Foundation expiring mid-January. That's coming up, that's what, about a month now? So is there any further discussion about extending that or is it premature to have that discussion?
So we were going to bring it back to the Friends and Foundation at their January meeting to see if they were comfortable with extending that through the end of our fiscal year. And I think that once they see how successful it's been to have that position, have additional ten hours, I think it should be something that they'll vote for.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I'll just comment that the flowchart is very, very useful. Thank you for that.
Yes. Yes.
Thank David. So David is, is great at creating these charts.
Okay. Now we move on to informational reports.
Chair Moreau will actually take public comments also on this item.
Oops, sorry.
No, not a problem. So we invite viewers to either participate on Zoom Live. You may raise your Zoom hand. Or if you'd like to join by telephone, please dial toll-free eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. Enter meeting ID one-six-zero-five-nine-five-five-seven-eight-one, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. To make a public comment, please dial star nine to raise your hand if calling by phone. You can then dial star six to unmute yourself when called upon. So again, if dialing by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. We do see that there is somebody that has called in. The hand is not raised, however, I will unmute the person to see if they have a public comment on this item. And so the telephone caller ending in six-eight-one, if you do have a comment, please press star six to unmute yourself. And since this is not taking place, then I would say this person is not wanting to make a comment. I wanted to try though, so we'll go ahead and close that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to the financial report.
So this section is the informational reports and I wanted to ask Mary Jane Perna to make a little update for us on how we're doing with our winter fundraising.
I'm, I would like to just give a few numbers on MC Gives campaign and on our fundraising for this quarter. The latter, I, there are a couple of things I need to look into to really be definitive with the figures, but I'll start with our year-to-date figures starting July one through December second. We're, we're ahead of last year. We're either seven-point-six percent ahead in dollars. Or if we allowed ourselves to include the Chandler Bequest, I usually kind of try to strip out some of the pennies from heaven like that because they distort performance. But it is fun to include it because then we're forty percent ahead of last year. But the MC Gives is just going so well. In two thousand and nineteen, as of December second, we raised eleven thousand, one hundred dollars from twenty-five donors. And this year we're at twenty thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars from sixty donors. So it's, it's a one-hundred-and-forty percent increase in the number of donors and eighty-three percent increase in the dollars. So who knows if we'll keep this same running rate? We made some changes this year, even though I really wasn't around for the entire process last year. I kind of, I think we've been more thoughtful about how we promoted it and put some attention into everything from the quality of the photographs and ads we've used to making sure they were placed in some publications. We've got the fabulous Friends and Foundation website that Doug Holtzman pretty much did single-handedly. And so there's promotional opportunities happening there as well as at NPL. And we did, Inga and I did some proactive solicitation of people who last year gave generously but weren't challenged gift donors. In any event, we've just been doing more one-on-one activity around it. And we lucked out because we got a two-thousand-dollar gift from a new donor. So that of course changes, moves the needle a lot. And so far, so good.
One of the comments that a staff member made at our staff meeting this morning is that he thought the public can really see that we're really struggling. We're struggling to be able to, you know, provide materials. We don't have new materials. We don't have very many staff. And that, you know, people are recognizing that by making contributions to MC Gives. So, yeah, we hope so.
Any comments besides to thank you for your good work?
Well, it's pretty fun, so just hold a good thought and we'll see how, where we end up and stick the landing in January.
Okay, so that's kind of a part of the verbal, part of the financials. But were there any questions that you had with me regarding the financial report?
Not here.
So one of the things that, that Francesca and I were wondering is that now with the, the way the financial reports are polled, we have a lot of options for what fields to include and what fields not to include. And so for instance, we could have numbers from the last two years on our report for you. So you could see where were we that same date a year ago and the previous year. One of the things that this particular report didn't generate is a percentage to show how, what percentage had we expended of the budget. And we did get one comment from a trustee that said that was a helpful figure to have. And, you know, since it didn't show up on this report, there was a question about it. So is there any thinking from trustees about what they find particularly useful in these reports? And I guess my thinking is, you know, how much is in, was in the budget? What's the total amount? And then how much has been spent to date? How much is left over? And what percentage is that? That's sort of my, when I look at these, what I find the most helpful. But there might be other suggestions, yes.
Jim?
I'm, I'm pretty much comfortable with that, but I know some of the older reports also had a column for encumbrances. And then the balance excluded what was actually spent. And I think it also excluded the encumbrances. And so I don't want to get too much in the weeds on encumbrances, but what's your thinking about that? Is that, is that included in the year-to-date actual or is that separate? I'm guessing it's separate. Or do you know?
Sorry, my computer froze and I missed your comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can you repeat it, please?
Sure. One of the earlier reports of this type that I saw had a separate column for encumbrances, separate from the year-to-date's amount expended. And then it showed a balance that I think was the amended budget minus the actual expenditures and minus the encumbrances to get the available balance. And I, and this doesn't deal with encumbrances unless it's included in the year-to-date actual. So that was, it's kind of a minor issue in some respects because usually the, the encumbrances aren't very big. But if we're going to kind of decide how we're going to do these for the future, it might be worth clarifying that if, if you know how that works or should work.
I think that it's helpful to have an actual available balance that includes encumbrances since once we've encumbered the money, we really can't count it anymore. So I don't, yeah, I don't know if, if these numbers do or not, so.
Yeah, my, my sense would be to either include the encumbrances in the year-to-date actual or have a separate column for that and then exclude both of those from the balance. If that's, if that's the same thing that you just said, I agree.
I agree with Jim, I think that makes sense because if you've encumbered it, you've in effect already spent it, even if it's not been withdrawn from your bank account yet. So I think, you know, that commitment by encumbering for a future expense ought to be taken into consideration from start to finish when we consider how much is left to consider using.
So the available balance would, would reflect the encumbrance and what's been expended?
Yeah, Jim, Jim.
The other, the other comment I was going to make was, and, and sometimes it depends on how much will fit on the page and be readable. But in, in the one that we had here, I did like having both the general fund and the trust fund expenditures all on one page. And then the same thing on the revenue page, having both the general fund and the library trust fund. So if, if that's easily doable, I like that. And then the other thing was in terms of, again, what will fit on the page, the idea of having the previous, you know, the amount expended in a, in a, the previous year, for example, at that same point in the year, that might be useful. I don't see that as a high priority, but it, you know, if it's easy to do and it would easily fit on the page, I would kind of like to see that, but, but it's certainly not a big deal to me. So that's, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
I do think that, going back to what Mary Jane had shared, seeing where we were last year with revenue, for instance, although there could have been a Bequest or some kind of one-off thing that happened that bumped our revenues up, but that could be useful, I could see that. Any other suggestions? And then Francesca and I will, and actually I should say Francesca will, will experiment and then show me some options.
Oh, I, I'm not sure if I said it, but if I didn't, I wanted to strongly encouraging having that percentage spent or spent, or percentage of, of the revenue projection earned. I find that very useful.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, then we, then we have the statistical report. I think we can put those together. We have the statistical report, you want to say anything about it, Inga, or just?
Other than, I'm not going to do the math, but if you look at the very final, final entry on the page, volunteers, you can see that last year we had seventy-five volunteers who contributed two-hundred-and-eighty-two hours. That looks great. But then this year it was nineteen volunteers contributing three-hundred-and-three. So those 19 folks are really putting in long hours, and we couldn't provide sidewalk service without them. So we're just deeply grateful to have them.
Yeah.
And then I guess also, let's see, we, I think it's, I'm impressed. I'm impressed with seeing, for instance, that we're only down 32% in terms of our circulation yet. We're closed to, you know, people aren't coming into the building. So it really shows you just, we're very busy. The staff are really, really pushing those books out the door, so.
So I, I did have a question about program attendance. So your program attendance can, it also takes into consideration online programs, I assume?
Yeah, that's all we have.
And is that adult programs is way off, and that's because they're all online and?
That's the other thing, yes. And I think that, I mean, that's, that's partly, this is reflecting Canary Row Days, which was this huge effort on Francesca's part with all the different programs every week that were virtual that she was coordinating.
I would also add that we had one program that had 92 attendees.
That's right. That's really. Right.
Was that one of the Canary Row programs?
No, it was the letter writing program by Alison Kuhn. She has spoken before at the library. It's always very popular.
And I think that's such a great example that, um, I think we had people from all over the country participate. And then we had more people participate than we have capacity in our community room. So that's an example of where virtual programming, you know, was able to reach so many more people than we could have if it had been a program in the building.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think, I think the data for this one month of October for adult programs, I think supports what I was, um, thinking that in that month, 24% more, not a third fewer, like in the actual checking out books column, which is still impressive. But, you know, it went down, not unexpectedly, but with this, the, um, all the programs have been virtual, right? We haven't had anything inside the building for months. And yet their attendance was 24% more. And so that, to me, says that's something that's working well now, and we ought to continue in the future, even when the front doors open.
And we're actually up overall by 10%.
Yeah.
And that's year to year. But I mean, just in that one month, 24% more than last October. And, you know, if we develop the quality and quantity of remote virtual programs, I think we're going to be able to serve a whole lot more people because, you know, frankly, looking at the post-Medicare age folks, a lot of them won't come to evening programs. And that's when more of the adult programs take place. And if we can offer them 24/7 on a virtual basis, you know, if they're repeat ones, then, uh, you know, I just think that's an example of us serving the community even better than we have been.
Okay, any other comments on this before we move on to trustee comments? Okay.
Chair Moreau, just in case, I'll do the public comments for both of those reports. So for both the financial report and the statistical report, to make a public comment, please raise your hand using Zoom, or if joined by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID number 1605955781, followed by the pound sign. Please dial star nine to raise your hand. And Chair Moreau, there are no colors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, trustee comments. On trustee Bogdan, you're muted, so you can't make any comments.
No, I just wanted to commend the staff for all the hard work they put in on preparing the materials for this afternoon's meeting. Thank you very much.
Justy Joshi, comments?
Yes, I just think we should move on with the RFID project as soon as we can. I think it's very close to my interest. And while we still have the opportunity where everything is closed down, let's get it done.
Hey.
Great.
Honey?
I just wanted to ask Inga, in the absence of city funds to purchase new materials, how is the wishlist book purchase program doing for us?
So I don't have recent figures on the Amazon wishlist, but I know it has gone really well. We've had people who've purchased like 11 titles for us in one go. And then we also did receive a gift from the Friends and Foundation in October, $25,000 for new materials, and that has made a big difference. We've actually been able to start purchasing what we call purchase recommendations. So people can submit suggestions for things that they would like us to buy, and we've been actually able to respond to those, which is great. And we've also used the funds to lower the number of people, buy more copies of super popular things so that the waitlist is shorter for those like big, huge blockbuster bestsellers.
And I wanted to mention, at one of our last meetings, I said, "Thank you for subscribing to Flipster" because, uh, you know, since we don't have the subscriptions continuing for a lot of the magazines, maybe all of them are, are, have gone away. But I think that's an excellent service, and I hope that we continue it personally because there are probably four or five on that group on Flipster that I'm interested in reading. But I just wanted to mention that I told some good friends about it, and they went on and they said, "Thanks, Bob, for the tipster on Flipster." We, we, we really like it and we want to continue it." And then he said, "And you know, I looked elsewhere on the library website, and I couldn't believe all the things that we had to offer or that were offered to us." And he was very impressed with the increasing smorgasbord of things that we are making available. And I think, you know, we ought to just keep full steam ahead in that general frame of reference. And I just wanted to share with you some feedback that I got, starting with the tipster on Flipster that he found so helpful. And it was, it was with regard to a journal that both he and I like to read. So that's why I mentioned it to him to start with, and he went on, and then he said, "Wow, and I looked at all this other stuff that you got too." So pat on the back to whoever's behind all that and keep going.
Wow, thank you. I'm so glad you mentioned it because that's something that we received through our Pacific Library Partnership membership. And so it's through funding that comes from the state that goes to our regional consortium. And our regional consortium said, "Hey, all these libraries that are having their budgets slashed, how can we help them? What about if we provide magazines?" So that is something that we're getting through that membership. And, and I agree, I mean, with all of our subscriptions have been canceled, then, you know, it's a great way for people to still have access to magazines.
Well, e- e- even when, you know, they're not providing that to individual libraries because funding is way down, I guess I would just put a vote in for continuing it indefinitely at Monterey Library in lieu of paying for subscriptions to hard copies. Because you and I could both be reading the same issue, whereas if it was a hard copy, only one of us.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, since this is our last meeting of the year, I just wanted to make a couple of end-of-year type of comments. One is, it's been a very tough year for the library and particularly for the staff of the library. And the staff that we currently have with us have done a great job. And looking at some of these statistical numbers, I'm just amazed at how much we're still getting done in the midst of the pandemic. And so thank you so much to the staff and to the volunteers as well that are almost staff in some respects. But on the other side, I'm feeling very sad about the employees that we had to lay off. That was very difficult for them, for you, that, for the staff that had to lay them off and say goodbye to them. And I'm just hoping that 2021 will be such a much better year than this has been. But again, on the other hand, I do appreciate all the work that the staff have done to keep the library going as well as it has been, and to the board members as well, because the boards had to adapt and deal with some difficult issues ourselves, but mainly to the staff. And so I'll just leave it at that. I hope 2021 is a much better year for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I echo your gratitude for everybody here and for the staff and for the volunteers. It's, it's, the library has done so much with so little. Okay, it's a, it's a, that's true. I also wanted to echo what you said about the Canary Row project, which was just phenomenal. And Francesca did an incredible job on that, and thank you. And all the meditation, then all the other things that the website has. And to mention that on Saturday is a fundraiser for the library where Apejoshie is going to present. And she is delightful. I've heard her speak. She's wonderful. So that's something that's also on the library website you might want to do if you have nothing else to do on Saturday afternoon. And wishing everybody the best for the, the new year because we won't get together again until January, except for the subcommittees, in which I was. Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
Are we going to keep with the fourth, what was it, the fourth Thursday we changed to? We're going to keep with that in the new year?
Yes, I believe so, unless there's any reason not to. It seems like it works with the city and it seems to work for us for a while, and.
Okay.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.